I would like to call the January 24, 2024 Regular Board Meeting of Fenton Community High School District 100 Board to order. May I have a roll call?
Figaroa.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
Hade.
Here.
Kovak. Lewis.
Here.
Rzynski.
Here.
Rego. Here.
We have a call. Please join me in exciting celebration, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
James, please read our Fenton mission, beliefs, and Bison Way statements.
Fenton mission statements to cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our Fenton belief statements: Successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Karen, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. We have one. Larry Anzalone.
As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker with the limit this evening of 30 minutes total. As a reminder, it is recommended to address staff members and students by title and not by name to protect their privacy.
Hello. My name is Larry Anzalone. I've been before the board before. A couple of you people on the board, I've helped get you elected. I'm here basically to provide an invitation to the board. I've brought copies of my name, address, email, and that for any board member that would like to contact me personally, specifically off company time because I don't need any more write-ups in my file. So if you have any questions or you'd like to talk to me, feel free to contact me. I was on the first strategic planning committee with Fenton and during that time we came up with a strategic plan, a mission statement at that time. It's been changed now. And I always believed that you're either part of the problem or you're part of the solution. So I'm volunteering. I don't like the direction in which we are going here. The administration is taking us and I'm deeply concerned. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'm volunteering my name and address and that. I have a groundsman partner by the name of Rodney Walters who's been gone since March of 2022. But I've been expected to maintain this grounds by myself and I would think by now we've had gotten some kind of permanent temporary help, especially with snow removal and everything like that. So that's just one entity in which I'm concerned about. So I have these pieces of paper with my name and address. Where would you like me to place them so that the board members can get them?
You can give it to Karen.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. The next item is informational. James?
Sure. Okay, we have a full lineup this evening. First item is a grant item that was awarded to Fenton High School by the IDPH. IDPH stands for Illinois Department of Public Health. The grant is a mental health grant which will assist our students and families. As we all know, healthy and positive mental health is very important. Mentally healthy students are more likely to go to school, ready to learn, actively engage in school activities, have supportive and caring connections with adults and other young people, use appropriate problem-solving skills, have non-aggressive behaviors, and add to a positive school culture. Rich Watts, our Director of Special Education, will review this important grant. Before he starts, I want to give Rich a huge shout-out for his hard work, his planning, and applying for this grant, and he'll tell you the amount. Rich?
Okay, so based on the mental health crisis across America and across our community, we figured that we had to look for ways to get money, money to make sure that we have support for our families. It was a very competitive grant and we were only, one of only 10 schools in DuPage County to get this grant. And it will extend beyond the classroom. The amount secured was $249,000 and it was from the Illinois Department of Public Health and it will fund mental health services at our school for our children, our students, and also the families of our students. It will, because if you build the families as a whole, it will increase the whole community, for lack of better words. So this is our Fenton Cares Grant logo. And when this goes out to our families, it will have the logo on it. It will have the access, the QR codes that will show families how to use them. So what is Fenton Cares? It's direct support for our families to access free mental health care. Fenton's school team can utilize the program to provide direct access to the free mental health care and our students and families can use it to have up to eight weeks of no-cost treatment, which we can extend if we see a need. Next question will be how to access it. This is where families will get advertisements and it will go also through our counseling department. And it will, for the ones that are sent directly to our families, there's these access QR code. Families just scan it with their phone. It goes right to a survey which will ask a few questions, all non-invasive. And from there, a company will call them and we start treatment. And then our student service team will be trained to guide families through the signup process so that we can help our families directly and guide them step-by-step on how to sign up for the program. Here are some examples of the marketing materials that will be used. It will be sent out in multiple languages. As of right now, it will be sent in Spanish, Ukrainian, Russian, and Polish. But our homepage to sign in on has over 100 languages to make sure that our families have the help they need in the languages that they need to access it. In the center of each of these will be the QR code to scan to sign up. Okay? For confidential purposes, we used Referral GPS as the company to support us, to connect our families with the therapists. That way they have their privacy and that way they know that whatever they discuss in therapy does not go beyond that room. So you know what Referral GPS does for us. They find, that they found and they vetted all the counseling departments, our companies, and the mental health support personnel offered through our program. They ensure confidentiality for all of our families and they maintain our landing page, which is the main page to connect the families with the services. Here's an example of a photo of the landing page. It's not live yet. It will be hopefully after tonight. And once that happens, families click-click the blue button there and it goes right to the referral page. So all of our providers, they have experience working with adolescents. They have availability and capacity. Our families right now are mentioning wait times as a major concern. This bypasses that. They're all dual-language, English and Spanish, and can also use other languages as well, probably, most likely through a language line or service if it's outside of English and Spanish. And they have been vetted to make sure they meet the needs of our families. Our clinicians that were chosen, they're all licensed clinical social workers. They're certified alcohol and drug counselors. They're bilingual. Certified partner abuse intervention professionals and licensed professional counselors. Don't forget, this is, if we have a student that's not in need but the family is, we still provide this service. So this connects everyone. And just to go back on the amount of the 10 schools, we have the second highest in per-student amount. So other districts that have 10 times as many students has the same amount that we have. So I'm very proud of that. It should last a long time. And I want to also add that if, I want to also add that if we do not use it all by June, it's okay because it will be in the program until the money is all utilized. Removing barriers, the treatment.
Before you, do either of the providers have remote capabilities?
That's a great question.
In person?
Yes. So we can have it either in-person or through a telehealth. Yep. And that's one of the questions on the dropdown page through the home app is what their preference is, if they want to split time that way, if they want some remote telehealth and some in-person. We can do any number of items. Good question.
Board member Hade, do you have a question for Rich Watts?
He actually answered it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
No, you were talking, but I got to.
Thank you.
If you're taking questions, there was a couple of slides back, you had all the services that people were going to provide. Where are those people coming from?
Great question. So from any one of the therapists in the neighborhood, so they're already, they're already trained professionals. They're already providing services. We're just tapping into those services.
Do you just subcontract to them to come in at night and meet the families or whatever the case may be?
At their, at their practice or through telehealth.
All right. And then they send the bill to you, I guess.
That'll be up soon and it is through a middle provider, a subcontractor. And that way it's separated from the district.
Yeah.
For confidentiality, too.
Is this grant potentially renewable? Do we know or?
That's the hope. So one of the items I'll get to here is that our parents-
Sorry, we're jumping ahead of you.
No, I like that. So our parents have an anonymous form to fill out to tell us how it's working. And we're compiling all of the data, which is why on the dropdown page there are a lot of questions. We're hoping to structure that to send back to the state to show how our families are utilizing it. And then I will get periodic updates that I'll share with the board on how it's being used and what's being done. Yeah. And then hopefully we get to renew it.
Thank you.
That's my hope.
Question. How are you able to reach the community?
Great question. So we're mailing out flyers to all the families. We'll have, all of our student service professionals will have direct access to invite families in and walk them through the process.
More specifically, I think, board member Figaroa, particularly our parent outreach. We have three in place, our Polish outreach as well as Patry Sonidos and PTO. Will there be a representative to present at those groups?
For sure.
Might be a better question. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll present to those groups. I'd be happy to. Yeah. And as we see any barriers come up, we'll expand to however we need to, to make sure that everyone in the community sees this and is utilizing it. So removing the financial barrier to offer no-cost sessions, removing transportation as a barrier by offering telehealth as an option, removing the timing barrier by offering evening and weekend sessions, and removing the scheduling barrier by avoiding the typical waitlist. So again, all of those things happen with this because it goes through the GPS referral. It goes through GPS referral and then they set up the contacts. Our next steps for this will be a start date projection of March of '24 and then run until all of the grant money has been utilized. I'm actually hoping it happens in February, but I put March just to be safe, to make sure that we have time to get flyers out to our families and make sure that it's up and running. And then our student service staff has already been trained in the program. And right now they're identifying students and families that might need the support so that we can start providing it as soon as the funds come in. Lots of great questions. Any other questions?
So literally, this is zero cost to the district?
It's zero cost.
This is all 100% through the grant? It wasn't a matching grant? It wasn't 10%, it wasn't 20%?
100% covered by IDPH. We do have to put the money out first and they reimburse us.
Okay. Well, that's fine. As long as we know, I wasn't sure a lot of these grants are 10% matching, 20% for matching, 50% matching.
Agreed.
So that was my question. And the fact that we're cutting out wait times and going to the front of the line?
Yeah.
Huge. Absolutely huge.
And as the special ed director, I am thrilled because I can, I can think of all the faces of the families in my mind that I can already see using this. And from when I first applied and was informed that we were being awarded this back in October, I've been trying to shout from the rooftops that we have this. And I wanted to wait till it was signed by IDPH, which took a while. But now we have it and, you know, I'm looking forward to get started. Yeah. Good question.
This is absolutely amazing.
Oh, thank you.
This is great. It really is because it's very much new in the community. Is it just a student or student and the family? Like say for instance, if it's the mother of a student, is it, or is it just a student?
No. If, if, if there's any challenge in the family, it's the entire family. If it's, and it could be even just, just a certain family member, so a grandparent in the house, even if the parents are doing okay and the student's doing okay, it supports the grandparent too. All they have to do is sign up for it. It's anybody within our district area and for whatever help they need. And some things, you know, come up over time. So yeah, this is exciting.
That's right. That'd be great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Excellent job. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Great job, Rich.
All right, thanks.
I just want to note to the board that, as you know, the administrators are always looking for revenue. For the record, 21st Century Grant was $750,000 for five years. Okay? Maintenance grants that we applied for, that we have received in the past, at least during my tenure, was, Manticas is about another $100,000 that we applied for. And with this mental health grant that we just received, there's over $1.2 million of grant money that we have solicited. So sometimes you hear a comment, hey, look, can you look for other revenues? These are, I just want to create a deliberate searches on the administrator's part to look for extra revenues. So I just want another shout-out to Rich Watts for that.
You don't, now the only, I mean, you gotta recognize going out for those things. You know, some you win, some you lose some, all right?
That's right. That's right.
All right, we gotta win.
But we keep trying. You gotta keep swinging.
All right, but we gotta win.
Yes, we got a couple wins there.
All right.
$1.2 million worth. Next up is 8th Grade Parent Night. And last week, we had an outstanding event.
Yep.
Shout-out to President Lewis for attending that. It was an honor to welcome the class of 2028. Dr. Benson led the charge there and I'm going to let him review that evening.
Speaking of winning, that was a winning night last Thursday, 8th Grade Parent Night. The class of 2028, can you believe it? Yeah, I know. That's who, that's who we were talking to, but they're excited. We had over 200 incoming freshmen at this night and obviously parents. We're going to scroll through some photos. We had a general session, as you can see, in English and Spanish. And then we moved on to elective courses where obviously when you're becoming a freshman, most of your courses are already predetermined, the essential courses. But there is room in the schedule for some electives and so they were able to see some hands-on examples of what, what they could take. And then of course, activities and athletics conclude the evening in the fieldhouse. And there, obviously kids, there was so much excitement there and kids signing up for what they're interested in. Just a great opportunity to, for kids to say, hey, I'm interested in this, whether it be a club or whether it be a sport. And so we already have kids to follow up on as we approach next school year and certainly this summer. So overall, a great night, great turnout. And now the freshmen will start signing up for courses. And we also went to the, obviously the center districts to meet with the individual students there. Parents can follow up and have meetings with counselors. So we're well on our way to getting this class ready to go.
Thank you, Principal Benson. Next item is our annual Career Fair, which was last Thursday. Thank you, Vice President Rego, for attending. We appreciate it when a board member attends. One of our strategic plan goal is to enhance and expand our career pathway. You've seen Michelle Papa Nicolau come here, attend the board meeting and explain that. And we got to remember our Fenton mantra is every child deserves a career plan. Okay? This is one of the activities that addresses this strategic goal. The Career Fair hosted 55 businesses and organizations. This event provided the pathway for our students to engage with businesses and organization leaders, to talk about their interests, and for businesses' leaders to provide information and insight to our students about their industry and profession. Michelle Papa Nicolau spearheaded this event again. A huge shout-out to Michelle. Rick Cambick assisted Michelle with this event and he will provide more information about this wonderful event. Rick?
Hi, good evening. So I got to play a small part in this and it was an absolutely wonderful event. But I have to give the biggest shout-out to Michelle Papa Nicolau and of course her, the rest of our team, which was Claudia Laclerk, Maya Whalen over here, Katie Rodwell, and nothing happens without our building and grounds crew who set up the absolutely great layout here for all the businesses to be represented. So as you see, we have a lot of logos up here. And Michelle and her team did a wonderful job at making sure every one of the seven career pathways was represented. What better way to help students develop ideas for what they want to do after high school than to have real-life experiences? And all throughout the school year, we have various teachers that have guest speakers, go on field trips, and the students get, get a little bit of exposure here and there. And then the Career Fair is a great way to bring all of those together and allow every student an opportunity to talk to every one of our partners. So the different areas are arts and communications, agriculture, food and natural resources, finance and business services, health sciences and technology, human and public services, computer information technology, manufacturing, engineering, and trades. So we represented all seven of those. Students had an opportunity to ask whatever questions they wanted, to actual professionals figure out what a day in their life is like, what it took for them to get to that point in their career and get a glimpse of what they'd have to do. And we had all facets here, including the trades, unions, law firms, manufacturing, and most companies engaged with about 30 students as far as earning their little tokens. So we had this bingo game. So in order for students to be involved in the raffle, they had to ask a variety of questions and earn a spot on their bingo ticket. So each business felt like they gave out enough tokens, about 30 per lunch session. So all the lunch sessions, students were coming through. And we even attracted the wonderful gentleman over at the Bensonville TV station. So they came in to do a segment. We were able to bring some of our partners on the show. So here we have Michelle explaining all of our efforts in career pathways, as well as Romekstera talking about their role in inviting our classes to their facility to showcase what they do on a daily basis. And then we had a second segment where I was able to interview two students who every single day participate in an internship out in the real world, doing a lot of the work that they could potentially be earning a high salary for once they graduate. And then at the bottom right, we were very fortunate that Elmer, his company that he interns with, was here. So we were able to talk to them and ask them, why'd you decide to partner with us? What does intern do? What do you think of our student who's here interning? So we're going to have his answer in a video next, but just in case the audio isn't coming through. Again, I asked them, why did he decide to partner? What does Elmer do? And then I even gave him a little crack and said, hey, did you take it easy on him? And he said, no, obviously we don't want to change anything. So we had him go through what all of our employees go through. And Elmer got promoted three times.
All right, we're here on the floor of the Career Fair with OSG. And what can you tell us about having an intern from Fenton High School with you?
Well, this is the second or third year we've been doing this and it's been really beneficial for us and we think it's been beneficial for the students as well. So we get to show them what we do in the manufacturing environment and kind of open their eyes to different careers. Because we see a lot of times people don't know what's going on in manufacturing and they have a negative connotation. So we try to open their eyes to everything.
So Elmer told us that he rose through the ranks and he feels like he got the real-world critiques and evaluations that you do with your regular employees. And it made him feel good that he was able to take a couple of steps up. So, I mean, tell us honestly, I mean, did you cut him some slack or did he go through the rudder?
No, he's, he's a real bright kid, first off. But we treat interns basically the same as we treat any employees. So we try to teach them everything and then follow up with them. If they're doing something wrong, we correct it. But yeah, he's been very able to adapt very easily. So we've shown him probably six different departments. And right now, he's mentioned that he's interested in engineering. So we're trying to focus and tailor it more to what he's looking for right now.
And what brought you here today?
Yeah, we're a local company. We're five minutes away. We've been doing this three or four years and, you know, we're trying to support the community and get everybody involved with it.
Well, thank you very much for your partnership. We're glad that you're here.
Thank you.
All right, so OSG is Osawa Screw Grinding. So they manufacture taps, drills, and indexable cutting tools. And their product is purchased by companies in the automotive industry, aerospace, energy production, dental, heavy industrial, and die-in mold. So Elmer is producing real-life work that is bought by real-life major corporations in our economy. And then Abby, who is the other student who was on the show with me, is at a law firm. So she's with Hunt and Subach, which does real estate, estate planning, commercial litigation, personal injury, a variety of driving topics, and workman's comp. And she's doing real-life paperwork that ends up going to court and working with real-life clients. And so with that TV segment, we're going to be able to get our exposure out in the community, be able to get our exposure out in the community. And they've agreed to give us a copy of it that we can post on our website for future companies to possibly see, realize that, you know, we're the real deal, and contact Michelle and Claudia and partner up with us. And I forgot, Ms. Lauren Lem, who's an incredible internship coordinator.
Thank you, Rick. I just wanted to point out to the board, about three or four years ago, we had zero. Okay? This was truly a seedling that we water, we nurture, part of our strategic plan, and it is growing deep roots within community. If you saw OSG representative here and manager, it's a win-win situation for Fenton and the businesses and organization within our community. So really, really exciting.
For companies that were listed on that flyer, was there representative here from each place or?
That's correct. Yes. Next item is Fenton Report Card Data Dive. At the November board meeting, the administrators presented to the board the Fenton's report card. We reviewed it and discussed it. At our January Teacher Institute Day, our teachers and administrators report, it was our turn to review the report card together and discuss the data. Kate Ward led that event and she will review this very important collective data dive. Kate?
Yeah, so I just wanted to give a little-
Yeah, so I just wanted to give a little report on what we did with that data. I know that as a group, we all discussed it and took a look at it. And one of the things that I kept thinking is what can we do with our certified staff around this data? And so there was a group of us, Jason Madel, Michelle Papa Nicolau, one of our instructional coaches, Stephanie Jackson, Michelle Rodriguez, our EL coordinator, Lorenzo. So a group of us took a look at this and designed an activity for our teachers, counselors, support staff to really dive in. So we looked at that same data, Fenton data longitudinally for five years, our data compared to Addison Trail, and then our data alongside of District Two and District Seven. And we broke it down in a way that it was manageable, because I know even when we were presenting it here, it was a lot of data to look at. But we did it creatively, and we had them look at that data in different groups. So administrators were also involved in this. So the first time you were with three random people that were not in your department was the biggest idea, or that you weren't going to have two administrators together. There was a time for individual reflection, and then at the end of the day, you met with your department to discuss the data. So we really wanted everyone to look at this in three different ways. And overall, the feedback from the day was tremendous. People loved looking at the data. They loved the random groups. There were so many comments that it was nice for, to hear from a counselor, who you might hear from, not always hear from, or what's an administrator's take on this, or somebody in the science department might look at it different than someone in social studies. There was also a lot of comments that while it was nice to talk to people from different perspectives, it was really nice also at the end of the day to consolidate with members of your own department who might see problems kind of from that same angle. So this is just a couple of the takeaways, but one of the things that we were excited about was many of the questions that we had or some of the trends that we identified in our group. The same thing with our staff, right? The increasing EL population, that was one of the trends that sparked a lot of discussion and is, you know, we're trying to take action around this. So we feel good because we've already been focusing on EL for all, so we're moving in the right direction. But some of the action items that the staff suggested was continued articulation with our feeder districts, more EL certified staff, which we're working on. And then, which I think is really cool, one of the ideas that came out of this is hosting a conversational Spanish class for staff after school that one of our teachers will lead, so that teachers who want to be able to communicate more with their families, we have Spanish teachers right here, let's start teaching them at Fenton. So that's something that's probably going to come out of this data dive. The other major trend, which we, again, have identified and have already been working on this through our MTSS program, is absenteeism, right? And so what the staff really identified is that we need to have a nuanced approach, right? Kids are absent for a lot of different reasons. So we really need to make sure we understand that and that we don't just have one approach for why kids are absent, but we're going to have to have a multiple-pronged approach, including home visits, educating our parents and the community about the importance of being at school, and even just missing one day a week is not, you know, that doesn't seem like a lot, but it adds up very quickly. Making sure that our classes are relevant and that the students want to be at school and feel that like they belong. And then also tying into what Rich was just talking about, making sure a lot of absenteeism has to do with mental health. So it was really great to have those discussions and to start off the semester, everybody being on the same page, identifying these problems, and then going from there. And then I think Jason's group is going to talk about MTSS, which is really one of the vehicles, one of our programs that we have that supports particularly absenteeism, but so many of our instructional and behavioral supports. So I'll turn that over to Mr. Madel.
Great job, Kate.
Good evening. For those of you who I have not had the opportunity to meet, my name's Jason Madel. I'm one of the deans here. I get to work pretty closely with MPSS, which, as you can see up there, stands for multi-tiered systems of support. In layperson's terms, that means help or support for students. There are four major categories, which pretty much touch on every part of the student as far as we're concerned: academic, behavioral, attendance, and social-emotional. In a moment, I'm going to go into a little bit more about what MTSS is all about here at Fenton, but I do want to make some introductions before I begin. Three people behind me are the architects of MTSS at our school. They built it. They are moving it forward, and they are going to continue moving it forward into the future, to the point where we are really going to be on the cutting edge of what MTSS is and is supposed to be. Okay? So I'd like to start with Edith Reynaga. Edith is our MTSS coordinator. She runs everything from the overarching system part to the ground-level small groups with students. So Edith is a huge part of MTSS at our school. Another member of our small but mighty group is Maya Whalen. Maya does a little bit of everything for us. She is a social worker, but she'll make phone calls home if she needs to about attendance. She'll meet with students one-on-one. She'll run groups. She really does it all. So Maya is very valuable to our team. And our final member here tonight is Ariseli Avila. Ariseli is a counselor. Ariseli was running her own version of MTSS at her previous school before she even came to us. So she's very well-versed in MTSS as well. So now that the introductions are done, I would like to go ahead and talk a little bit about why we are here tonight. MTSS has really taken off in the last two years here at Fenton. It's a great thing for our students, and I realize that the three women behind me do a ton of work just because it's the right thing to do, and there's not a lot of recognition because it's just hard work, and they do what they're supposed to do in order to help our students. So the two things that we recognize are most important about MTSS for our students in our community are number one, that our supports are during the day. Our students have too much going on outside the day. They're active in extracurriculars. They have jobs. We needed it to be done during the day. The second thing I would say is probably indicative of all high school students, and that is, we needed to go to them. By that, I mean that we used to set up all of these groups, and they were great. And then the period would start, and there'd be no one there. So the three women behind me took it upon themselves to start what we call as a push-in program, meaning they go to the students' classes and help them there. So they're getting the support even if they're not able to get themselves to where the support is. So those are two pretty important tenants that we follow when it comes to MTSS. Okay, I will make this slide quick and painless for you. On the bottom, you see federal mandates regarding SEL supports for students. On the top and the L, you see things Fenton has done. The reason we put this slide up is pretty simple. In 1997, you can see one of the federal mandates came through. 1997 is when I was in high school. When I was in high school, I needed a little bit of support. The reason that's up there is I knew nothing of the supports that were offered at my school. I didn't know who ran them. I didn't know how to get them. They were there by law, but they weren't really very functional. You can see in the 2000s, in the mid 2000s, I suppose, 2007, Fenton started to really sink their teeth into this. So we got our start in 2007. We began working on SEL and PBIS. PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions. We got started. We had some people doing really, really, really good work. From 2010 till about 2020, you had people doing really, really, really good work, but they were all doing it in a bit of a silo. They were all kind of doing it themselves. Everyone here cares about kids, but everyone was doing a separate thing on their own. When Maya, Edith, and Ariseli began to take over, the idea was to start systematizing it, making it available to everybody, making it so when new staff members come in, they can look at the MTSS program, jump in and say, okay, it's plug-and-play. This is what I do if a student needs this kind of support? Great. So we can present it to the board and say, look, this is what we do. If you have a child who is still going here, I want you to know that they're going to be helped. We're looking out for them, and we're recognizing them. So that's why it's really important to note what happened around the 2020, 2021 timeframe. Sorry, that wasn't as quick as I thought it'd be. This slide will tell you a couple of things that the facts show. And that is that positive MTSS programs help with test scores. They're equitable because they're available to all, and they decrease things like suspensions and expulsions. The thing that I would like you to take away from this slide is that MTSS helps students feel safe, comfortable, and supported when they're in school. If students do not feel safe, comfortable, and supported, their academics are going to suffer, right? So our job, as far as we're concerned, is to make the students feel that way. So when they're here, they can focus on their academics because they're not worried about the social-emotional issues. And this slide just talks a little bit about how we decided to build our system. Our goal is that the system is going to be built incrementally and gradually, so it becomes a part of our institution and has a lot of staying power. So what we did, you'll see six circles up there, but they're basically in groups of two. The yellow and the blue are about shared leadership, and they're about getting as many people involved as we can, getting as many positive role models and positive adults around our kids as possible. MTSS by the book says that you should have 100% of the people involved. Not sure if that's possible. But the shared leadership and the collaboration, we're building leaders, we're making sure our adults in the building know that our students need them to be a positive influence on them when they come here during the day. The red and the green talk about evidence. We have a program called Panorama. It's fantastic, very powerful, very robust, allows us to run tons of data on all 1,450 students, so we can grab as many of those students and put them into small groups so they can get the support they need. All right? So we're able to look at all four of the areas I talked about: attendance, academic, social-emotional. And we're able to put those kids en masse in groups of eight. By the end of this year, we will have run over 50 small groups throughout the day for our kids, which is a great thing. And the purple and the light blue is the last area that we talk about. And these are for the kids that we need to make sure do not fall in between the cracks. The data's great, but there are kids who may be just not struggling enough to be recognized. So the leveling, which we'll talk about in a minute, and the building capacity and infrastructure, it's all about having other ways of identifying students. So we have problem-solving teams. Any student can be brought to that at any point in time by any adult in the building. You know what? The student may not be failing all their classes, they may not be getting referrals, but something's going on, we want to help this kid. So we do have fail safes in the event that the data does not flag this kid for us. And this is going to be quick, I promise. Not that quick. This is a representation of what MTSS is. It's a pyramid. Every student gets universal. That's the green, okay? So that's what every student here gets, the services that every student will get. If a student needs a little bit more help, they will get yellow. That is called targeted intervention, tier two. That is on top of the universal intervention, all right? So they will never lose interventions and support. They'll only gain it. Tier-two interventions usually look like small group work, eight to 12 students. Tier-three are students who need an additional layer of support. That is referred to as intensive. Those students would be getting the universal, the green, the tier-two, the yellow, and then the most intensive, which is usually one-on-one, which would be the red portion. Okay?
Quick question.
Sure.
For tier-one, what is your average group size?
So tier-one's this whole student body.
Oh, okay.
So tier-two is when we start breaking them up a little bit, and that average size is about eight to 10, would you say, for tier-two groups? Eight to 10.
When you think of tier-one, you want to think of classroom. What teachers are doing in the classroom, counselors coming into the classroom.
Okay, next up is Ms. Maya Whalen.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Maya Whalen. I was hired in 2021 as the Social, Emotional, and Extended Learning Counselor, which is basically an interventionist position to help students coming back to school from the pandemic. As you probably know, a lot of our students had some, you know, deficits in their social-emotional development as well as their academics. So when I came in, the first thing I did was to try to initiate like a needs assessment, where we sent out a Google form through student email for them to fill out, just to find out where their needs were. As a result of that, I started some drop-in groups that students could come to on stress management, coping skills, anxiety. Those were the highest needs that our students indicated at the time. And also, I saw a lot of students individually to address those social-emotional needs. As far as the academic needs, we did run some study skills groups, trying to get those students on track with their study skills. But also, I tried to connect students to the resources that we already had here at Fenton, such as after-school tutoring, Bison Resource Time, peer tutoring. I would connect the students, but ultimately it was up to those students to follow through with those interventions. I'm going to switch my slide here. I noticed that at Fenton, there are amazing things happening when I started. The social-emotional learning was happening in the classroom. The positive behavior interventions were happening. Academic supports were there. Behavior interventions were happening. Restorative practices were happening. Trauma-informed practices were happening. Diversity, equity, inclusion, these are all wonderful things that were going on at Fenton. And as Jason said, I think what we were missing was that all of those things fall under an umbrella and need to be a system. So I started working on some of those ideas, and then, as Edith will talk about when she came in, we were really able to bring that together, where the social-emotional, the academic, the behavior, the attendance, interventions, the family engagement, all addressed the whole child and helped us to be able to support the whole child in their education. And basically, you know, this comprehensive system of MTSS that we're building, it really strengthens our supports and helps hold us accountable for the success of all of our students here at Fenton.
Again, I'm Edith Reynaga, and I am the MTSS coordinator here at Fenton. And so I started in the fall of 2022, and I just wanted to give a quickly recap of kind of our focuses and where we started, and then I'll kind of share with you some of those interventions that we were able to accomplish last school year. The biggest change, which was very helpful to us, was Panorama that Jason mentioned, which is a comprehensive software platform where we can view a student as a whole, and we could see their attendance, their behavioral, their academics, and social-emotional. And it really helps us kind of target those students that need the most. Our tier-two interventions was a big gap that we saw, and that is where we focused a lot of our energy in creating those small groups and finding ways in which we could reach the students as we found that they weren't necessarily coming to us. We also worked alongside with the SEL team, as we're all part of the SEL committee, and creating curriculum for our academic interventions that already existed, as well as some of our Bison Times in which we offered more supports to our students. So the image at the top is actually provided from Panorama, that software that we had. And it's this word cloud that was created after they all completed the Universal Screener, which was the first thing we gave out. It was our first intervention that we did as a part of MTSS. And the question was, thinking about everything in your life right now, what feels the hardest for you? And someone said, schoolwork, grades, time management, pressure. And it's also offered in like their native language. So on there, kind of in the small above-schoolwork, it says aprender inglés. So some of the students were able to answer that they would like to learn English, and that came up on our feedback. And so when we tried to create those small groups, we noticed that emotional regulation was a big gap for our students, and we tried to create an emotion regulation group. And we would have the sessions, and no student would come. And so then, in meetings with student services, they were like, well, what if we just go to kind of some of those intervention classes? And one of those that we had was Bison Orange. And it happened to be that those same students that were marked kind of like red in Panorama were those same students that were in Bison Orange. So we did a pilot program where we had some of our counselors go in for a total of six sessions in two of those periods, and they were really successful. The kids enjoyed them, did some things about like time management, emotion regulation. And it has now become a part of the curriculum of Bison Orange. a part of the curriculum of Bison Orange, where now we're doing a total of eight lessons in all four sections of our Bison Orange classes. We also did a push-in into our ELs, as that was a big group, our English Language Learners, that was often getting missed, especially our newcomers, so our ones that are 1.5s, and we did a total of six weeks for each one, and those were also very successful, and we had some feedback at the end that we'll share with you, where they kind of shared that. It was more of like team-building and experiential therapy in a way with them, but we found that they actually really used that Bison Time. And so although they were trying to engage, they were also trying to like work on their stuff, because a lot of them have a lot of responsibilities outside of school. And we did an AIM group, which is an attendance intervention. It's called an Attendance Improvement Mentoring Program, provided by the DuPage ROE to address truancy, and we ran two groups of those. We struggled still a little bit with getting their attendance to the group, but at the end of it, we were able to build some really amazing relationships with them and found effectiveness in it. And in that way, we kept filling more gaps. We started a grief group, we did two sections of those, because a lot of students were experiencing grief. We did a mentoring program, check-in, check-out for our freshmen that were struggling in all the categories where they were paired up with an adult, and we were also providing transportation for them, because getting to school in the morning was the hardest thing for them, and we found some success rates in that, too. And the last intervention we tried last school year was our Ukrainian Student Group, as we saw an influx of Ukrainian students coming here to Fenton and offering more support for them. And so I wanted to show you this quick chart of our growth in our tier-two interventions. So in the fall of 2022, we served about 5.4% of our students, and as Jason said, we want to be between the 10 and the 15%, and that was about 76 students, with our EL Bison Times, our AIM Groups, the two Bison Orange pilot, and the Ukrainian Student Group. And this past fall of 2023, we are about 9.6%, so reaching closer to that 10 to 15% serving a total of 136 students, running some affinity groups, which were some groups that we observed at Hinsdale South. They have this really awesome school psychologists that have run some really awesome groups, and we were able to observe them and kind of make our own version here at Fenton, along with all four sections of our Bison Orange class. We did a pilot program, an Academic Lit, another one of our intervention classes for our freshmen, and we, again, paired up with the SCL Coordinator, and we did some social, emotional support in there, and a transfer student group, which was another need that we saw as we had an influx of transfer students.
What is academic intervention?
So it is an academic intervention class that addresses our ninth graders in English and math. And now I will hand it over to Aresadi.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ariseli Avila, and I am the school counselor, one of the school counselors here at Fenton. I have the pleasure of working with this amazing team and bringing it all home for you tonight this evening. You've heard what MTSS can do for our students and how it really identifies each student here at Fenton. We work on helping them with their social, emotional interventions and supports and meeting them where they're at, and we help them with their academics so they can really achieve all of their goals here within their four years and post-high school. What's next in MTSS? In front of you, you see that we have the Universal Screener. That is one of the pillars of MTSS, is really screening and making sure that we are capturing each student, addressing their needs, using interventions that are evidence-based, and monitoring the progress of each intervention so that we can continue to grow it and continue to use and have what our students and our community needs. And that has been the overlying theme that I have heard tonight, with our mental health that Rich Watts has brought in, all of our certified staff that really want to see our students achieve their goals. Some of the items that we want to carry through this semester and continuing following years, we're going to continue using the Universal Screener so that we can identify our students. One of the things that is very parallel to what Fenton's mission statement and vision is the relationships. The relationships that we build here with our students, with our staff that have skillsets and that want to make those connections, we're going to continue with the Check and Connect 2.0. So we're going to find that staff, we're going to find that student, we're going to build those mentorships and those supports so that they know this is a safe place for them. Relevance. Why is that relevant? Because now we're using self-management skills, lunch bunch, to connect the academics to their social, emotional needs. The relevance empowering our students, cultivating the foundation of what we want for them is really going to help them achieve that rigor. It is going to help them achieve the self-confidence and everything that they need to really take that healthy risk, take that AP class, take that accelerated class, let me talk to my teachers, let me make this connection outside in the community. We are helping to foster students and families that are going to be productive members of the society, and of Fenton, of course. What does MTSS mean to our students? This is just some of the feedback that we've collected from our students, from the words of our, from the mouths of our students. It was most helpful knowing I'm not alone. Goes back to that connection, relationships, that working with people is not as bad as I thought. It was most helpful learning how to identify my feelings. We know that when students can identify their feelings and communicate that with a trusted adult, they will excel. This group helped me have a little bit more confidence. That's huge. It's been such an opportunity and a pleasure to work with this team and a school that really values this work and MTSS. And on the last slide, again, another quote from a student. It's a group that we have fun, but also learn new things about yourself and the ones around us. So here you can see Edith doing a luncheon learn with some of our boy students. We had last year, the therapy dogs come and meet with our students. We have another girls' group, I believe, that's down on the right corner, and then our boys' groups to the far right top in the middle, where they are practicing some of that experiential therapy that really gets them thinking about, what are my choices? What am I doing, and how do I apply that in the real world? And I will, oh, sorry. Well, here's a video of the boys doing an experiential therapy technique. This is called turning a new leaf, and we really connect it with practices and principles that are going to help them be successful and achieve overall success in their life. So thank you very much for your time.
I think I'm going to put the group on the spot, okay? And here we go. Board, as you know, we looked at the report card data. You saw it from the middle school, you saw it through the high school. Kate led that charge. We did it as a group, we went through the data with the teachers. Then she introduced the MTSS group. And the question for the group here up there is, what are your thoughts if we do, with this thought, this idea first? A truly effective school has a very, very strong and effective MTSS program. If that is inserted in our feeder schools as well as Fenton, here's a question, how would that look like? What kind of fruits would be bear?
James, you told me I'd only have to talk about things on my slides. It would only be beneficial, right? I mean, our students, it goes for everything, not just MTSS, but our students, it's nice when our students know kind of the way things go at Fenton as they're coming up through the system. So I don't see any reason why, as long as they're open to it, we can't start collaborating, right? Building it out in their buildings as well. So our students, I mean, students don't just pick up baggage when they're freshmen in high school, right? This starts much earlier. So I think the only thing it would do is benefit our students if we were able to start building that bridge back to the feeder districts and start implementing some of, it doesn't have to be what we're doing even, there's best practices everywhere, right? There's a lot of smart people in the other districts also, so maybe connecting with them is the route we need to go.
And helping anyone before they're receptive, could you talk about some of your efforts you make in showing the kids, the students that you care, so that they are receptive to all of the services that you guys do?
Well, I can answer this, and then someone here can jump in if they'd like, because what I would like to point out is a lot of, the students you see in the video are great kids and students that we love, but they don't necessarily love school, right? And so it's, a part of it is persistence, right? And a part of it is just letting them know you're not going to give up on them and you're going to continue trying to help them. But I am going to invite maybe Edith, because Edith is the one who kind of corralled this group of guys and got them really pulled back into what we're doing here at school.
So I had mentioned our Attendance Improvement Mentoring Program, which was provided by the DuPage ROE, and we found, I had mentioned that it was effective in creating relationships, but many of those boys in that group were in that previous group, and although they didn't respond too well to the attendance group, like they would come and they wouldn't say like anything, but they would continue to come. So we're like, okay, like, either they're trying to avoid their Bison Time, but we're getting them whichever way we can, and we're like, we'll take it. And so like, we tried to work with that, we talked with Maya, be like, I think they hate it, I don't know, but they're still coming. And so then, we had invited them to do the Boys Affinity Group, which was like what we mimicked from Hinsdale South, and it all started with like, it's going to be this chill group, and like, they made their own idea, even though we explained to them that they were going to like learn skills, talk about emotions, and then they're like, no, it's a chill group. And so like, it had taken about a year, a full year, of building that relationship with them. And at Hinsdale South, Dr. Dwayne Williams actually has his students for like all four years in those groups, because it takes a while, especially kids with trauma, to earn that trust and build those relationships and truly believe that like you're there for them, and really offering like a trauma-informed lens of them not being judgmental and meeting them where they're at.
I'm going to jump in, too, and I think one of the things that this group is doing such a wonderful job of is, Edith identified this before, we had a lot of these things, or I think Maya did. This group is doing such a good job, like, I think what was happening at Fenton before, and a lot of this was before the pandemic, is we expected kids to advocate for themselves, right? And now they are taking the services to them, because we can see they're in other interventions, and knowing that if you're in some of these other interventions we have, you, there's other, you have other needs also, right? So we're not really letting the kids like choose, you know? It's really like, we're offering these services and taking it right to them, but it takes a lot of work, but these women and Jason are doing such a great job of figuring out kids who maybe wouldn't have the wherewithal to come forward and ask for help, so they're bringing it to them, which is awesome.
No, having it all brought together under one umbrella, I think, is huge. I was at a meeting this morning in Will County, and one of the longest conversations was knowing what is available to you through different avenues, and it's amazing how many people don't know what's out there. How do we expect our students to know what's out there without some guidance? I think there are some that will advocate for themselves, there are a lot that will not, and getting them that help, and no matter how they perceive it, because perception is their reality, they're still getting those underlying lessons, and I think that pays dividends in the long run. So I can't thank you all enough. Now, a comment on this for consideration, has anyone seen the legislation in Springfield about mandating screenings? So I'm assuming with this tool, we're already ahead of the curve if that passes in the legislative chassis. So that was a question for you all, because in my mind, we are already ahead of this future mandate that will probably pass. So this covers that, then? We are in compliance already? So that's awesome. So this is definitely a win-win for us.
I applaud the change, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I applaud the effort or the change to go to the students, because services like this benefited me a lot at those ages, but someone, I didn't know I had an issue, they came, and so, and I assume it's the same in a lot of situations, but it's a great change. It was a great job.
Are all of the services in place that we're discussing today, or are you still implementing some of the services? Are they all in place?
They're all in place. The next, I think, big group of interventions taking off is on Monday. So I think like our substance abuse group and all that, it's in place and it's going.
It's great to have kind of a one-stop shop of services available to the students, or they don't have to go here for that and here for that, and that can be discouraging, and so I think this is great. I agree.
I can just add to the majority. So if the intervention isn't happening in the classroom, such as Academic Lit or Bison Orange, we are focusing most of our interventions to happen during Bison Time, so that like our small groups and everything take place during Bison Time, so that students are not missing academic instruction time, so.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate that as young adults, you want kids to advocate or start to begin to advocate for themselves, but I applaud that you are doing the advocating for them, because they are young adults, they are children, and a lot of times, like Carrie said, they don't sometimes even know what they need, or if they do know what they need, they may be afraid, so I really, that is really appreciated.
Thank you. Those are some of the skills that we're actually focusing on in the groups, is learning those self-efficacy skills and then practicing it so that, you know, we are preparing them to do more self-efficacy.
Do you know the percentage of schools in DuPage County that have this level of MTS? I just want to brag on those.
Which is actually, in a lot of my research, I've talked with Kate about this, where it's really full, like functioning, really robust in elementary and middle schools, but because they have them all in one space, but at the high school level, as it's, I haven't found yet a school that I can have anybody to contact and be like, what are you doing over there? Like, how are you doing this? And so I think as a whole, like, all high schools are kind of like learning to, in a way to implement, and coordinator roles are kind of new in schools, MTSS coordinator roles, so that's why I think it's usually like, there are many gaps and in silos, as it was mentioned earlier.
And in fact, there have been schools that have reached out to Edith to ask what we're doing, so that's exciting.
That's good.
Just give my hand. Thank you for the time and all the kind words, appreciate it.
There's a lot to say about the program, as you could see, and they'll be back. Next up is our draft school calendar for next year. Everyone has a hard copy of this. Once again, I'm going to reiterate, it's still a draft, it will go to the board for an approval at the next board meeting in February. We're about, we're pretty close to getting it complete. It still needs to be tweaked a little bit, and for a couple of individuals and groups, including our union, to take a look at it again before it's finalized on my end, and I will recommend for approval next year. Big picture, calendars are calendars. We know we start in August, we end in May. So I'm going to go over this real quick, okay? There's about 176, 177 student attendance, okay? We do that every year. 180, 180 teacher attendance, okay? First day of school is August 14th, last day of school is May 23rd, I'm going to jump around, so that's normal. Thanksgiving is normal, that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, okay? Will be a holiday. Winter break is normal, kind of like this year, 23rd to January 3rd, our staff comes back, January 6th, it's a Monday, students don't come back at that time, we have One Teacher Institute, they come back on January 7th. Spring break, we like to align that, as well as winter break and spring break, with our feeder school as well as DuPage, so that's aligned. Graduation, and we're going to dive into this a little bit, is May 22nd, last day of school is the 23rd. So here's the big change, okay? Traditionally, we have graduation on a Sunday, okay? But what has happened, especially with AP classes, College Board, it's been, the college AP exam has been pushed back to later on, later on in May. This year is May 16th, okay? In the past, I would say year two, three, we would have graduation practice during this test time. It's not fair for our seniors in particular, because they would just say, should I go to graduation practice, should I go to prom, should I do graduation brunching, okay? And so forth. So there's pressure there, as you could imagine. So this year- So this year, that's why we discussed as an admin group, this would be one of our strongly recommended push for this calendar school year, which will provide a year and a half in advance for families to plan for a Thursday graduation instead of a Sunday. If you remember when your kids were in middle school, our grad, the middle school graduation is usually a Tuesday or Thursday. So I think it's, it's traditionally, at least with incoming students, they know that graduation, their experience has been a weekday instead of a Sunday sort of graduation. So we're pushing that on the 23rd, which is the Thursday right after our board meeting, okay? For exactly what it is. It's because, hey, look, our kids need to be assessed without distraction, then graduate. So that's something to think about, and we could, if you guys have comments, I know I spoke with Carrie and Juliet about this, and, and they seem to back this after a game in reason, but I would like to hear from folks as well.
I'd like to know about time.
About 6:30, 6 o'clock?
Okay, so people would still be able to go to work if they needed to.
Correct, or 7, right, right, depending. Usually it's an hour of ceremony. John?
Well, that was my question. If it's a weekday, are we going to do it in the evening? Because not everybody can take off of work to attend. And I don't think it's fair to, to cause parents to be unable to attend. I'd rather see us graduate on a Sunday a week later than force people to take time off if they can't afford it.
Sure, that's fair. That week, that Sunday, a week later, is Memorial Weekend.
They're off anyway. I'm sorry. I mean, I'd rather not have to burn a vacation day at certain points in my life. I, I just, I, having it on a Sunday makes it easy for grandparents and parents and families and people who work historically, Sunday is probably the day most people work least. Okay, we're moving into the evening. Now, all the parents that have night jobs are going to say, what the hell? 15 years, I'm looking forward to a Sunday day, and now I have to take time off. I don't think that's fair. This is not only for our students, this is for their parents, this is for their grandparents, this is for everyone that supported those students throughout their time here at this school. And I'm not comfortable with this.
We were just thinking, would people be more upset about missing a potential holiday, going away with their families for a holiday vacation that they have had planned for the last year? Or would they rather have a year to plan taking a day off of work? Or would they rather miss the vacation that they planned for a year?
Well, if they see the schedule in advance, they won't plan a vacation.
Or if they have the, if they see the, the calendar for a year.
I don't disagree, but it's a lot easier not to plan a vacation than for some people to try and get off of work.
And one curve too, folks, is that school is done the 23rd. That means school is done, right? We're asking them to come back on a Sunday when school is complete for graduation. I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that as well, just to point that out.
I don't think there's any way to win here. I don't. What's going to be the least impactful financially to our families in this community? What's going to be least impactful to those families? What's going to allow for the people who support our students to come and see this proud moment? That's my question. That's my question. Not everybody has that flexibility.
Right, I wasn't here, but wasn't there years ago, it was a weekday. So, so it's not unheard of that there are weekday ceremonies here.
In, in my tenure, Dr. Bennett, it has always been a Sunday.
Right, but before that, I think there was a timeframe.
And at the junior high, it's on a, it's on a weekday.
I'm just throwing it out there as a parent. You know, you have somebody who started and they're watching every Sunday graduation, and now boom, it's their year next year, and we're throwing them a curve.
Okay, back to the.
That's my concern, and we're never going to please everybody. If we make 51% of the people happy, it's just like winning an election, that's all that matters. We're never going to please them all, implementing it now for students that have been, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out for discussion. We don't have to figure it out today. I don't know. And I don't want to send out a survey because that's not going to help anything, because then we're going to, I want a Tuesday, I want a Wednesday, I want a Friday, I want a morning, I want an eve. We're never going to win. I'm just, this is things I'd like us to consider before we make the final decision. And if there's been feedback on it, I'm fine with it. I'm, I've got no skin in the fight. My kid graduates this year.
Here's one more thing, the reason once again to move it after testing is to make sure our seniors are able, number one, to participate in the assessment, to focus on the assessment, which is academics and learning. Then, once they're done with that, focus on the graduation events, including graduation.
When are the assessments?
The assessment is the last day, it's the 16th, May 16th.
May 16th. So what's the matter with practicing on the 17th and graduating on the 20th?
Saturdays are usually.
No, no, 17th is a Thursday. You said the assessments end on the 16th, that's a Wednesday. So we have 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23. What's, what's the matter with?
Make sure you're looking at May.
May, may.
Am I not looking at May?
You're looking at 2025.
Okay, I was looking at April.
And it's 2025.
My bad.
And it's 2025.
Yeah, depending on what you're looking at.
Well, yeah, but that's, we're talking about that calendar.
Right, we're talking about, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's 2025.
Right, I understand that, right. I just looked one month up, I apologize. That's what was confusing me.
Yep, you're right, yep.
I'm looking at dates going, well, how does this not work? And what's the matter with a Saturday rehearsal? I know it's more of an inconvenience.
Well, one could argue kids work Saturdays too. I mean, we usually typically do rehearsal in the morning, the week prior to graduation, so it's timely, it's quick, it's right there. The, the seniors are always out of school sooner, like a week earlier, for example. And so they can do the graduation practice during the week, like versus a Saturday coming in, it's just, it's kind of more embedded in their routine.
I, I get it. I'm just throwing it out as, as, I, I think a family would rather see a kid miss his part-time job than a breadwinner missed their, breadwinner missed their full-time job. Although evenings work, but people do work second shift, people do work 12-hour shifts. I'm looking at, you know, the makeup of our communities, people who work in industries. I'm just throwing it out for conversation.
But Jack, and we agree, and Board, can we agree that we want to do it after the assessment so kids can focus on this?
I don't have a problem with that. No, I don't have a problem with that at all. You're right, that's not fair to the student in the assessment.
Education should, right, okay.
Just something to think about, whatever comes back next month. I, I had to speak my piece, and.
So wait, what are you, what are you recommending?
I'd like to see it stay on a Sunday. How we make it work?
25th.
25th.
No, he said either the 25th or the 18th.
I was looking at, I was looking at April, not May.
No, you're talking about May 18th, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, this is Sunday.
Yes, May 18th would work, or the 25th would work. I just, just throwing it out there, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. I mean, that's fine, it's just, I'm not opposed to change, and there's good reasons for change, but we have other options than just an evening. And yes, some schools graduate in the evening. I get it. I'm good either way.
What, just, if we could just, so the, the problem with the 25th is it occurs after the year's over. Our, our staff do a great job of coming to graduation, but it's not, you know, like a paid type of situation, so.
Yep, never mind, yeah, scratch the 25th.
So that would probably not work.
That's not fair to the staff either.
Right.
Just something to think about, if the exec board wants to chew on it, get some feedback, and whatever comes back next month, I'm good with, I just, we had to have the discussion. Sylvia, Reed, Leo, any comments here? We haven't heard Carrie, no comments, okay?
I just shared, I mean, it was a concern about a parent having to take off work. I understand that, and that was, that was it. However, we come to agree on what's going to be best for, for the student, as well as, you know, the parent being able to attend, then, you know. I'm not opposed to a survey, I understand what you're saying.
Oh, no, no, don't do a survey. Don't open that bag up, I'm sorry. Don't go there. This is the survey.
Yeah.
We are the survey. The people in this room are the survey. Maybe some of our staff, but no, no offense, but no.
Make a compelling case, sir.
Yeah, and just think about it, and whatever comes back next month, I'll be fine with.
Quick feedback from Sam, Kate?
Well, I think the, the point when we were talking to people is, early communication is critical, no matter what we do. And so something's going to be a little bit, perhaps, out of the ordinary, so whatever we end up doing. I think it's great perspectives to hear.
Yep.
It's important to hear. These are some of the things that we kind of grappled with, but there's the, there's the student and the parent perspective. We're, we're all parents here too, I think, or most of us, so I can relate to that. What, what we have seen more is the kids trying to decide, am I going to brunch, or am I going to this AP exam? And it, the, it should be a joyous time for kids to be done, and we want to try to, that was one of the drivers, is to try to take that out of the equation for the kids. We've, we've kind of seen enough of that.
Okay, we'll continue that discussion. Next item, just like to recognize, as well as applaud, one of our rock star teacher, Mark Drellashar, who's our automotive teacher here, that's nominated for tomorrow's Technician School of the Year. Just really outstanding, let's give him a hand, he's over there. Sam and Rick, shout out to them. They created here, which Sam is going to present here, and maybe we could get a word from Mark afterwards.
Right, so Mark, first off, thanks for sticking it out here tonight. I think I said, should be a quick meeting, but I was wrong. And all, we appreciate you being here. He's a good family man and, and young kids, so that means a lot. So anyway, so obviously Mark heads up our autos program and, and what we are, what we have up here, he's nominated for one of the Schools of the Year. There's only 20 schools that were like invited or to be nominated, so that in and of itself is a major accomplishment. You see there tomorrow's tech, which is the, the publication that's putting this on, and WIX filters, and O'Reilly are sponsors of this event, some sort of automotive publication about educators and, and students. So it's, it's, could be a high school, it could be a vocational school, it could be a private school. So right now, everyone is put in for, for this, and we're hoping to get in the final four. We don't know that yet, but there is, coming up here in a little bit, a six-minute video that will show you what was created. There's been a lot of talk about careers, the Career Fair tonight, which was awesome, and this fits right into that. Tremendous partnerships with Grand Subaru, we can't say enough about that partnership where kids are going over there and working and loving it and doing hands-on experiences. It means a lot to them. And Mark has led that collaborative relationship. You know we have a good relationship with Subaru in a lot of ways, but that's really flourished. And then also reference to the Army National Guard coming in, and he's trying to set kids up for, for success with possibly making some connections there. So I think we're going to take a look at a video here. I asked Mark if he wanted to speak. I think he took a pass, but, you know, Mark, if you want to chime in, or if you have questions, he'd be more than happy to, to jump in. But maybe we could go to the video, and then we go from there.
four-stroke motor works and gained knowledge of how to construct and build one. And with the knowledge I learned there, coming back to school during my sophomore year and taking the automotive program at Fenton High School, I was able to be more hands-on, take the knowledge I learned from small engines included into the operation of a vehicle, being able to do oil changes, any maintenance needed to be done on the car, wipers, et cetera. I learned how to replace tires, put them back on, and allow, or build the knowledge that I've learned from small engines, included it onto a vehicle.
In my near 15 years at Fenton High School and working in a low to middle income class community, we have a lot of blue collar families, workers, and students. I have tried to do my best to expose them to all facets of life and career opportunities by initiating a dual-credit program with the local community college, in addition to starting the first ever, potentially in the state of Illinois, career track program, where my automotive students get to spend actual live time working at a partnership, partnership dealership of Grand Subaru of Illinois. Additionally, we have partnerships with Scooter Works USA, or Scooter Works Chicago, where students are able to work on motorcycles and bikes in the classroom and potentially obtain, obtain employment with Scooter Works USA afterwards.
Junior year, also being back in school, I took my second year of automotive, and we got the opportunity to go to Grand Subaru dealership and be part of their automotive group and gain more knowledge from them and allow the students here, including myself, to get that, to get that experience of a dealership and allow us to be able to get more opportunities in the real world.
Well, I think with today's modern vehicles, especially with most going electrified and moving forward here, the technicians of today and the future face a lot more challenges than technicians of the past.
A lot of it has to do with kind of the uncertainty in the industry, with the impact on EV, and as we kind of learn more and more with regulations, you know, day by day, week by week, you know, year by year, but it's, there's definitely a humongous impact on, on the young kids not knowing exactly what they're getting into in regards to electrical systems and stuff of that nature, with the cloud-based stuff.
Yeah, nowadays, a technician doesn't just need to know how an engine works, but how it interacts with the computer and how that computer interacts with a cloud-based system.
Fenton's been a great solution in regards to our partnership. We've been able to, you know, work together and bring these young kids in, and not only give them, you know, behind the desk, you know, the experience, we've actually brought them into the industry, showed them, you know, what the technician's life is about from the whole, you know, an entire dealership aspect in regards to writing up customer processes, parts processes, in the shop with Express, doing oil changes, sitting down with, you know, true journeyman technicians, learning how to work on cars, not only just working on cars, but the day in the life, how to use our, our software systems to communicate with all of our employees, you know, interdepartmental stuff, making stories about exactly, you know, what was wrong with the car, how it was fixed, things of that nature, is, you know. And while they're here, we also make sure we, you know, you know, like we talked about, we were, we want to make sure they understood about the business and taking care of the customer and all those things, not just working on cars, big business, big, big, you know, big business, all of those other things that were, that are a lot more important than, you know, kind of a technician would just assume, just going into the industry. It was a great partnership and, you know, while sitting down trying to figure out what we wanted to accomplish, I think Fenton hit it on the head with this, you know, with this work relationship where these.
I, I agree wholeheartedly. You can learn, you know, you can go to school, you can go to class, you can learn as much as you, as you can about a vehicle in a book or in a classroom setting, but until you get that real world or experience, you know, it's a, it's a whole different ballgame. So Fenton does a great job of getting these kids in and learning the business from the, from the ground up.
Future, so it's partnerships like that that have real-life value that our kids enjoy, and they could see, is this something that I really want to go into? I think it starts with our outstanding teacher, Mr. Drellashar. He brings a lot of energy, a lot of experience with autos to the field. So when our students come in as a sort of an exploration of what the autos industry is like, he really brings it to life for them.
Bringing innovation into the class isn't easy. I'm also able to attend the Illinois College Automotive Instructors Association Conference yearly, where I can learn about some of the newest technology and service techniques, and then expose them to my students. Lastly, we have lots of speakers come in, anyone from, anywhere from Wyoming Technical Institute with their example vehicles, all the way up until the Army National Guard, where students have been exposed to different service options within the industry and the country that not only would benefit their community, but also the nation.
I have a question. Is this a continued partnership with Grand Subaru, or was it just?
Yes, so we began this last year as a pilot, where we sent a group of students one time, and they spent the day at Grand Subaru, and then from that, this year evolved into last semester where. And then from that, this year evolved into last semester where for a two-week period, a one-week break and a two-week period, every single student got to go two times. First, it was like an orientation day. They still spent the entire day. The second time, they spent also the entire day there, but weren't an area that fit their passion more. And now we're about to kick it off on February 6th for this semester, where the students now return for an additional two full workday experiences at the dealership.
That's great.
It's always nice to get a helping hand, I'm sure, as far as Subaru is concerned. But in the meantime, they've had, they've been willing to adjust their operations to accommodate the kids too, I'm guessing.
Most definitely. First semester, that's something we're adjusting for this semester. Four days in a row for two weeks in a row. So it's Thursday through Friday. They have three students there a day. So for them to make a partial sacrifice, to accommodate our students and also provide them with invaluable, real-life experience has just been like, it's been incredible. So this semester, we're spreading it out over a period now of either six or eight weeks. We're going to go Tuesday, Thursday instead, now that the students can be more focused and then it won't interfere with their businesses as much because of the season change. Things will be picking up more. While there's less training this time, there's still going to be a, a great deal of activity with the students there.
So it sounds like there's a bit of a curve there. The kids keep going. There'll actually be a, a contribution of the business rather than perhaps a bit of a draw.
Well, I just going to say that thank you. My kid was part of that program. He started Subaru back in 2019. He worked all the way to Subaru. He was selected to work for Toyota. He worked for Toyota. He got the training. He was depart. He went to Marines. He spent four years there. Right now he's working in a dealership and I'm really proud to say thanks to that gentleman.
My goal has always been like, seeking this nomination is just what I really wanted to, my goal here was to just kind of highlight the passion and the heart that the students of this program have and how they've developed and grown over the years. That it's become such a, like a unique environment and family with the kids. And now having the opportunity to provide them with dual credit from College of DuPage, full-on experiences at, at Grand Subaru, it's just been, it's been great. And we've seen a definite change and turn in the students, which is awesome. I've never had the goal of converting them and creating them to be mechanics. But my goal has always been to kind of coach them into being like technological and mechanically responsible citizens that can later on benefit themselves in their career or their community.
Just curious, what guard unit are you working with? Are you working on an North Riverside Transportation Unit or?
I'm not 100% positive. We had a recruiter come from, or come to Fenton and we worked with him a couple of, a couple of years and then COVID hit and things since then have been a little different. We're hoping to get them back with him the next year.
I'm just curious, a former guard guy, so.
They brought multiple vehicles. It was phenomenal. But I know they pulled that one year, six gentlemen from different areas throughout the state.
Probably different units, different vehicles. That makes sense. That's great.
Air troopers, motor pool, everything.
Mr. Drellichar, I hope you know in our hearts and our minds that you have already won that award. Yeah, from Fenton Hertz. Also, ever since I got to Fenton, I've always been a Mark Drellichar fan. Number one, because you're a great teacher for our students, okay? Number two, your hands-on, minds-on, okay? And Mark has really evolved to be that poster child of career pathways, college pathways. He's got Subaru, which is a partnership. He works with internship. He's doing dual credit with COD. You've seen that, okay? So that's where we would like to involve. So Mark, once again, thank you.
And he's even more awesome because he's also an instructional coach. So he's teaching our other teachers how to inspire kids the way that he does. So yeah, he's a huge part of our faculty.
Thanks again, Smart. Okay, we were nominated for another FOIA. Quarterly Smart Procurement.
We have a video for that.
No video. This is a quick one sentence. Spartan Procurement, as you know, is a company that collects purchase orders from public institutions like Fenton and other public schools, purchasing records from September 18th to present. That has been resolved. That is the end of our report. Mr. President.
Our next item is consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak? Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Obscene.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Next item is discussion and action items. Approve of the Illinois Department of Public Health Mental Health Grant. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the Illinois Department of Public Health Care Referral GPS Agreement between Referral GPS and Fenton Community High School District 100 for mental health support programming, training and collaborative partnership opportunities. Furthermore, it is recommended to approve the MNA Holdings agreement in the amount of $15,000 to maintain the records of services provided for the delivery of mental health services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does this referral GPS have something to do with all this?
Yes.
Yes.
That is basically the focal point that talks between IDPH, Fenton, that unites basically the paperwork as well as finance.
All right, takes care of all the paperwork.
Correct.
Okay. And then another one is, something else, it's another contractor. MNA Holdings, are they all there and something to do with this too?
Yeah, they're, they're part of it as well. They're, they're going to maintain the records. So their, IDPH bid this out. So these are the two contractors that won the awards to administer this grant.
Okay.
That's a one-time deal and both of those amounts will be reimbursed to the district.
Okay. So when we approve the mental health, we approve these contracts too?
That's correct.
Yes.
Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Next item is field house door replacement bid. May I have a motion that the Board of Education award the low bid, the low base bid of $213,230 and alternate one for $58,100 for a combined total of $271,330 to Decursey Construction Company.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Next item is, is adopt the resolution authorizing preparation and publication of the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025. May I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing preparation and publication of the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025?
Yeah, motion.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Committee reports. Benserville Committee Foundation.
We have a meeting tomorrow. I know I was told we have a nice thank you and we're going to have a staff member and three students there. So I will be attending along with our people to thank them and handle the business of the day and I can report next month.
That's great. Board DEI Committee?
We have nothing to report since all the board members has, are being trained. So we are waiting for any training that in the future could be possible.
For the Board Finance and Facilities Committee, it's nothing to report. Next month we have a?
Yep.
Next month we have a meeting. Board Policy Committee?
We just want, we just had a board policy committee just before this meeting to go over the new policies and we'll be voting on those next month.
For IASB, we'll be having a regional meeting March 5th at 6:00 PM. Rest of the board members ready to attend. Lend?
Nothing really to report. Anything that comes up with Lend, it's usually an email and I forward that to you, which you have received. Just to recognize, we do need a board representative for Lend. We haven't, Paul Wedeman was our last board representatives. And the reason why I'm the go-to individual for this meeting is because usually these meetings are attended by all superintendents and it's usually on a weekday on Friday, 8:00 AM. But let's start thinking of maybe a, an alternative for me or a board representative. This is a legislative educational north.
Oh, the Lend?
The Lend, yes. So think about it and we could have that discussion and perhaps maybe you could contact Carrie if you are interested. It's usually once a month. There's nothing in December and during the summer hours, summer legislation.
Where do they meet?
It's, it's sometimes at the Regional Office of Education. It's sometimes virtual. It's sometimes at another high school location. So it, it really depends. Sometimes in Springfield.
I could probably do that.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Juliette.
But I don't know if there's somebody else that is interested in that, that.
So if you're interested, how about this? If we are interested, let, let's get ahold of our executive. That's Juliette and Carrie and we'll discuss it.
I don't want to step on anyone's toes that's very interested, so.
We'll be looking at your resume.
You're more than welcome.
Next.
We had a meeting last Monday. It was actually an emergency meeting because we got two items that need to be both. So we got the Transitional Learning Center. It's been updated and it's going to be right here in Bridgeway, 329 South York Road. It's going to be at least for 121.5 months. And that one is going to be according to the school calendar. And also we got another recommendation for the, I want to say the operational board meeting, to the government board meeting. So they got a one-year contract for the program administrator for the 24, 25 year. And of course we stayed longer for another hour until 4 o'clock, until the governing, governing meeting get together. So we vote for that. So I believe this coming September. That's right, James?
Yes.
So the Transitional Learning is going to be hosting a new home. So congratulations. And really it was a hard work from James because he was part of the negotiations. That's all my report.
Our next board meeting would be Wednesday, February 28th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. With a tentative finance facility committee meeting scheduled prior to the regular meeting at 6:00 PM. May I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the following. A, 5 Illinois CS 120 slash 2C1. The Appointment, Employment, Compensation, Discipline, Performance or Dismissed or Specific Employees of Fenton High School District 100. B, 5 Illinois CS 120 slash 2C2. Collective Negotiating Matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more, for one of more classes of employees. C, 5 Illinois CS 120 slash 2C8. Security Procedures, School Building Safety and Security and the Use of Personnel and Equipment to Respond to an Actual, a Threatened or Reasonably Potential Danger to the Safety of Employees, Students, Staff, the Public or Public Property.
You need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, got one.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. You can take a.
Chris?
For it.
Jim, let us know when we're live.
Also, we're being on air.
What do you say?
Back and open the session.
This one.
May I have a motion and a second to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all and good night.
Thank you.